Okay, we'll call this regular meeting of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 16th to order. And we'll have a pledge allegiance. Tori, can you lead us in the pledge?
I can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
I forgot to remind everybody to mute themselves, including myself. Okay, Ken, we have the roll call, please.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Betts.
Present.
Commissioner Keen.
Present.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aki.
Commissioner Carranza, probably not on yet. Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff. We have six present and one absent.
Okay, can I get an approval of the agenda, please? I bet you want to make a motion.
A motion.
Jason, do I need a second for that?
I'll second.
Tori, second, okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Keen.
Yes.
Commissioner Betts.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza. Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
And that, I just moved Victoria over as a panelist. I don't know if you saw her.
See her on the screen.
Can, Victoria, can you hear us?
Here, thanks.
Okay, and for the approval of the agenda, were you able to respond to that with a yea?
Yea.
Okay, great. So we've got 7-0 on that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation. The commission may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do we have any people in the public that would like to make a comment?
I'm not seeing anybody with a raised hand.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and move to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and will be approved by one motion if no member of the commission or public wishes to comment or ask questions. Can I get an, uh, a motion to approve the consent calendar? Or is there anybody that wants to pull? It looks like the only thing on there is minutes. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar.
Victoria, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jennifer, thank you. And can we get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Carranza. Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Betts.
Yes.
Commissioner Keen.
I'll abstain because I was not here last week, last meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1. Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the election of a chairperson and vice chairperson. Phil, since this is the first time most of us have been through this, can you lead us on how to go about this?
Yes, it begins with a nomination, and that nomination can come from any of the commissioners, and then the nomination is followed by a vote for the chair and vice chair. And no other qualifications. So you can just nominate one of your colleagues, it, you know, in, in, simple as that. With Commissioner Betts, there may be some issues in the near future that take him out of that particular option. I'm not going to say any more than that, but, I want to de-nominate him at this point in time.
Okay, do we have any, we have anybody that would like to make a nomination for Commissioner?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Jeff Van den Eyckhoff for Commissioner, or for Chairperson, I'm sorry, for Chairperson.
Okay, and for any other? Okay, how about for vice chairperson? I would like to nominate Tori Keen as the vice chairperson. The only ones that are left from last time. It's so strange, there's a whole bunch of people that usually one or two.
I love you, I love you back.
That was good, that was good.
We will need a second on those, that motion.
Any, do we have a second on the commission chairperson and the vice chairperson?
I'll make a second for both positions.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
I can do a roll call.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Betts.
A resounding yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Keen.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the Community Development Staff Reports. It looks like we have a report on the greenhouse gas inventory report finding summary. Who's got that, Phil?
Yes, John Holder is going to give us a brief update on that, and that's something that, a couple other agencies have helped us out with in terms of getting some background information, and just wanted to report out to the commission on that tonight, but, if John's ready to fill in the gaps, I'm going to let him give you a brief presentation on that, and then we can answer any questions of the public, but we know action required by the commission on this tonight. It's simply analysis and information. It may help us in the future towards, streamlining our environmental review process for projects that we develop in our city. But without taking away further joy from John's presentation, I'll let him proceed with that.
Thank you, Phil. Let me share my screen real quick. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
I've been waiting all day for this presentation, John.
I'm excited to hear that. As Phil said, I'm happy to share my joy with this presentation as well. So as Phil mentioned, this is just a management report, no actions required by the commission. So I'm just going to briefly go through the 2018 greenhouse gas emissions inventory, or CPP 21-0005. And so just a bit of background on the inventory and why it was completed. So the city as a local lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, is required to account for and mitigate for GHT emissions. In 2014, the city of Atascadero completed its climate action plan, or CAP, and that was based on a 2005 baseline inventory. And that cap outlined GHT reduction goals through 2020 to comply with AB 32, which required a 15% reduction below 2005 levels, or 15% below that 2005 baseline that I mentioned. And then, last year, there's a coordinated regional effort, as Phil mentioned, to complete GHT inventories throughout the region, and that was funded by the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, or SLOCOG, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, or AMBAG, and our local air pollution control district. And that was a grant-funded program. What it really was, was AMBAG providing the technical assistance to cities like Atascadero to complete their 2018 GHT inventory, so that they can establish local SEQA thresholds and update their climate action plans. So GHT emissions inventories provide an accounting of GHT emissions across a range of sectors. That includes the built environment, which includes industrial and commercial sectors, as well as residential, and also wastewater, solid waste, and transportation emissions. These GHT inventories are generally utilized to formulate climate action plans and also develop further GHT reduction strategies. And that may include the establishment of local SEQA thresholds for GHT. And the city's 2018 GHT inventory provides a detailed analysis of emissions by sector, as I mentioned, and also an update to the city's existing 2005 baseline inventory. And the reason that that 2005 baseline inventory was updated was because there's, since 2014, there's new methodology used in the creation of GHT inventory updates. So as I mentioned, the city's 2005 baseline inventory was updated. And I don't think we have to go into the details of the methodology, but it's basically, when the 2005 baseline inventory was created, an outdated version of software was used that didn't account for all greenhouse gases. So in order to be consistent when updating the 2018 inventory, AMBAG went ahead and updated the 2005 inventory. And as you can see in table four, the 2005 GHT emissions were quite a bit higher than the updated 2005 GHT emissions. So in summary, the 2018 GHT inventory illustrated a 16% reduction between 2005, that baseline inventory, and 2018. As you can see, the majority of the reductions were in the built environment, as well as the, so, sorry, the transportation sectors. And this is a breakdown between the 2005 and 2018 inventories by sector. As you can see, transportation and residential and commercial industrial sectors account for the largest emissions. As, as you all probably know, Atascadero is considered to be a bedroom community, so it's really hard to cut down on those transportation emissions. And the primary reductions in residential and commercial industrial emissions were largely a result of sourcing of PG&E renewable energy. And just to quickly go over why we saw those reductions, as I mentioned, there's a kind of a trend towards more renewable energy sources delivered by PG&E. There's increased fuel efficiency that will lead to a slight decrease in transportation emissions. And there's generally less electricity usage in commercial and industrial sectors. And then it's also important to note that in 2014, there is also a change in, in, data aggregation law by the Public Utilities Commission, which could have contributed to the reduction in overall emissions for the 2018 inventory update. So just a quick summary of what the 2018 inventory resulted in. The city has met the GHT reduction goals outlined in our 2014 climate action plan. This was a 15% reduction below 2005 levels by 2020, and that was as part of AB 52, or Assembly Bill 52, which was the 2006 Global Warming Solution Act. The 2018 inventory provides a foundation for the city to update our climate action plan if we choose to do so. And most importantly, the update in inventory will help the city proceed with streamlined development review as we analyze projects under the California Environmental Quality Act for GHT emissions. So basically, we're on track with our climate action planning efforts. And this 2018 inventory will help us proceed with more streamlined development. And staff is available for any questions, if the commission has any questions.
I do have one question. What, when I read this, the transportation sector number, I expected to be high, but I was surprised that it was higher than the residential energy usage. What, and I know that Atascadero is a bedroom community, and we have a lot of commuters commuting in for work and out for work, but what are the jurisdictional boundaries? That are, what, what are the jurisdictional boundaries as far as this report goes?
When you say jurisdictional boundaries, you mean where do they measure us as terms of the edge of our city limits? Where do they draw the line in terms of?
Yeah, so it, it says in the transportation sector that the emissions are being measured within our jurisdictional, on the roadway, within our jurisdictional boundaries.
So that would be our city limits, where they would measure that from, so, you know, if you're, it's kind of a good point. If you're driving, you know, outside of the city to get to work, does that get measured in the city?
Right.
Is that measured in the county or another city?
Right.
Driving through there. Interesting question. Is that how you're, you're asking that?
Yeah, that's exactly how I'm asking. So is that going to get to us, or is that getting attributed to somewhere else? Yeah, it's my understanding, obviously, we have people that travel outside the city on local roads to work, but it's my understanding that this does not, this takes out the 101 freeway and the Highway 41, so some of those that are not considered local roads are not included in this number. It's included in the countywide number. But this is just local roads, although obviously some people use local roads to filter in and out as well. Okay.
That's interesting. And that the, the impacts of those roads obviously make an impact within our jurisdiction, but yet it would be substantially higher if those were added in some way. I have questions, please.
Sure.
Two questions. Could you explain what you mean by aggregation? And then the second question is, do local jurisdictions within this, within the city boundaries, such as the school district, are they, have to have their own gas inventory update import? Or do they bootstrap onto the city, or vice versa? It's kind of interesting, and schools all now have solar panels for no net gains in electricity. And I'm wondering how, is that a benefit for us, or is it something separate for them?
Yeah, that's a great question.
I don't know that we know that answer, really, do we, John?
Yeah, I don't know if, what the other agencies, if they're required to complete their own climate action plans.
Well, they do implement SEQA this district.
That's correct.
They do, but, and I think they're included as part of our community for this particular study, even though obviously they're essentially a separate agency. They're still a part of our community for a lot of these things, kind of like they're part of our community for our general plan, even though we don't have permit authority over the school districts. They're still considered part of our community, and that's my assumption, but I really don't honestly know. That's a good point, actually, to bring up, and it's something we can talk to our advisors that created this and to the school district to see how that's done. It sure feels like the school district sometimes operates in a vacuum compared to how our city plans things. We don't have much to say, you know.
The same would apply to ASH. Are there, are their numbers being added into our numbers? I know, like, for, they have a totally separate waste calculation to calorie cycle, but are there in energy inventories being figured into this, or are they separate?
They should be included in this because they're, they're pretty much the second largest employer in the county, and they're considered as part of our community in terms of employment, in terms of emission sources. So even though there are separate state entity, and they have their, a lot of their own separate resources, I would assume that they were included in this. We didn't get, John, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we got a breakdown of, of that level of detail, did we?
No, it's pretty surface level, but a lot of these calculations, like solid waste, it's population-based. So it's a, it accounts for other residents in the city. So I assume that accounts for the other agencies. And it's supposed to capture community-wide emissions, so I think the intent is to capture all those emissions as well. And then to go off Dennis's first question regarding the aggregation of data. So that was interesting. In 2005, and this is all according to AMBAG, and I'm happy to get some more information from them. But the, the 2005 baseline inventory was created when there were different privacy regulations for utility data. And in 2014, those regulations changed, so that likely impacted
And I'm welcome.
these new inventories that were created and probably contributed to a reduction in the emissions that we're seeing. And it's harder to access that data now, that public, formerly public utility data. So that's kind of the explanation we got from AMBAG on that.
It seems reasonable that we kind of spread out that way through the aggregation.
Yeah.
I have a question for staff, a couple of questions, but I hate to do this. This is really petty. I'm staff at the City of San Luis Obispo when I pay one commissioners to this, but check out page 14, which is the, one of the first pages of the attachment. I think the consultant meant to say city of Atascadero and not Hollister. This is, okay, note that. It's okay. Hey, I'm staff on my side. I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll double check with them, but that's, I'm hoping they.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
And that comes from sympathy and love, I promise you. So, is this for staff, is this going to be presented to the city council?
Are we doing that, John? Do they want to?
Um, it's kind of up to us. I think it'd probably be good to.
Essentially, they, AMBAG wanted us to present this study to our local agency, and so I think, we'll check to see if city council wants to see this. If not, they'll see it by the virtue of it coming to the planning commission. They'll get the report. Whether it actually comes to a public hearing as an informational item, they can choose to do that or not. So we'll look into doing that. But essentially, they, you know, AMBAG wanted us to present these results so that they could, you know, basically certify that we have actually officially received them and, and made public notice of the fact that they're doing this for us. And they did provide this for us, so.
The only reason I ask is this, you know, for staff, is this, you know, a big enough deal to help inform the councils and develop their kind of major goals for the budget in terms of, you know, continuing focus for staff and the community to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to meet X, Y, and Z goals by 2030 and 2045? Is it, is it a big enough deal in this community that this needs to be a part of that conversation?
Yeah, I kind of want to piggyback off of that and say, like, is there any way to know what our current cap, like, if that had any effect on this?
There probably is a way to draw a link between those two. So anyway, just to answer Ryan's, Commissioner Betts's question. It's something that's entirely at the city council, is the whether they want to utilize this to guide our future discussions regarding goal setting. Our intent from staff is to utilize this so that we can develop SEQA thresholds, so that we can basically find ways to be able to utilize this information so that we can streamline our SEQA review, and so that we can understand how our greenhouse gas emissions fit into that whole equation. So that when we had a development project, we have to analyze it in accordance with SEQA state law, and this helps us get there because we have a threshold, and then we can start to develop mitigations for that project so that we can bring it into a level where we can mitigate it in accordance with state law. That's probably the most important thing for us. That's when we see this fitting into the picture, rather than guiding the goal-setting process by the city council, unless they choose to utilize this data in that way. At this particular point in time, the city council hasn't asked us to bring this to them. They know this is available, and we'll consider that as they direct us in the future.
And that was my kind of third question was, in, in, if you don't have the detail, that's fine, but how this will streamline the SEQA review process? And if it doesn't go before the council, I think staff should at least get some sort of credit on how that streamlining occurs, especially with, A, streamlining review permit process, and B, kind of meeting the statewide obligations and requirements to meet our climate action goals by 2030 and 2045.
Absolutely. So how does this streamline development? How can we use this data? So right now, we have to answer two significant questions every time we look at a development project that is a discretionary project. That means it's a, it's a project that asks for exceptions, a conditional use permit, or it's something that falls into that discretionary action and requires the planning commission to make a decision. When that happens, our staff, in accordance with state law, is required to look at that project in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Now, two major components of that California Environmental Quality Act that came into play a few years ago that are state law is we're required to look at a project's impacts to greenhouse gas emissions and the vehicle miles traveled. In other words, how many trips are produced, how many vehicles come out of this new project? Let's assume, you know, someone comes in with a subdivision to build 100 houses. We have to look at all of those potential environmental impacts. This is the first step in kind of building our own local threshold, is understanding where our inventory is, and then building off of that ways that we can mitigate so we can fit these projects in the city without having to draft an environmental impact report for every big project that we get, if that makes any sense. If we don't have this data, and we have to rely on the county or pollution control district or countywide regional sort of thresholds, it puts us in a much more difficult position than is if we could develop these strategies locally here in Atascadero and customize that data for what we, you know, what we can impact, what we can mitigate here locally, if that makes any sense, so.
It totally does.
Essentially, yeah. Meeting, meeting state mandates is what we're trying to do by, by developing this. But at the same time, it also helps us understand where the more significant issues are in our community. And it's true, the building code already has given us a lot of guidance and has probably contributed a lot to what you see on these charts, because new buildings now require significantly more insulation, for example. They all require solar. They're all reducing the amount of energy they use. Same thing's happening in the auto industry. So it's beginning to be reflected in these numbers anyway. But can we take that and capture that so that we can be allowed to do additional development without exceeding our local thresholds? You know?
That was, and I'm thinking, just spitballing, where this data could come in handy is if, you know, your example, Phil, developer comes with a, you know, 100-unit subdivision project. If the developer provides priority to local residents for first option to buy, because they live, they could live and work in the city, that could help with GHT emissions over the long term. because they live, they could live and work in the city, that could help with GHG emissions over the long term. So there's little things like that that the data could provide some insight on.
Yeah, I like that one too. Yeah, that's the whole idea. And this is what the whole thing is made up for is can you create jobs in your community and create housing in your community? Can you have a balance of those jobs and housing? So that people don't have to drive into slow or pass out to go to work. And so that kind of a policy like you just mentioned is an exact example that could come out of this. And at the same time, that kind of a policy makes us a healthy community in so many other ways. In terms of us having the tax, tax revenue here and making our community whole. So.
I think the benefits also could be in terms of streamlining. If you're, you, if there is a group that's interested in challenging projects for whatever reasons, SEQA is always the best avenue to do, to, to make challenges. And if you have information like this that's being studied beyond you by larger groups, then the challenge has to include why the information that, the, the basis for the decision or the basis for the analysis is on. They have to, they also have to hit that other avenue. Why, why is the Ambag wrong or where this information comes from, why are they wrong? So it really makes it more difficult for people to challenge things. And it's, it's beneficial for the city to use that for that reason.
Yes, great. I believe Victoria, you, you had your hand up.
Yeah, well, two questions, I guess. One is, so in the summary, it says such an update may be eligible for state funding and gateway to future planning grants, but then it's not clear to me if the city chooses to update its climate action plan. So who chooses exactly and where would that get made, that, that decision exactly?
So that, that decision would come from your city council. So our, our city council needs to provide direction to staff us to update our cap and to do that on a regular basis.
Right, because I know that they do have their strategic planning this Friday, this Saturday. And
Yeah.
I do think our commissioners are making a good point about, even though they did not ask where they will have access to it. And yeah, it further streamlines that process. So, okay, just asking about that. And then I liked Ryan's idea. He had that specific example of giving priority to local folks for housing. And so those are great strategic ideas. I wouldn't have necessarily thought about that right away. I might have thought about a different idea for using, I guess, this GHG report to create findings like that and giving incentives. So I would love there to be a little bit more work done on, on that perhaps, how to extrapolate, like how to, how to make this report actually incentivize it for developers. And like, how can they use it without having to think of all those ideas on their own?
Yes, that's what comes next. I think that's our next work effort is getting this data and then we build it into how can we create, you know, these pre-done incentives and mitigations? And that actually is one of the activities that we have allocated grant money for and some of our grants that we've received recently to do work is to set up SEQA thresholds, which include just that. A list of ideas, incentives, a toolbox, might you say, of things that people can grab from to say, hey, I like that idea. That's a great incentive. I'm going to utilize that to reduce the impacts of my project. So we will be doing that.
So like a SEQA guidelines type document?
Yes, but it's probably going to take us until next year to get there, based on how this year is going and the number of work priorities that we've already got in, in policy development and in development view, considering our significant projects that we have moving on right now.
So Phil, would those incentives, I mean, would you take advice from our commission if we had those or is it going to be a specific maybe update meeting next year that you'll be probably showing us what you all came up with as staff or?
We will have a specific hearing on that topic, but by all means, if the commissioners have comments that you'd like to get to us individually or when, you know, at the time when this begins to come to you, it'll come to you more than once. It'll be like the study session that we'll talk about it, then it'll come back for some decision making.
Great.
Yeah, I think, just my limited experience in this realm and staff, correct me if I'm wrong. But Commissioner Carranza, that really kind of is the purpose of a climate action plan. And so identify, you know, where you're at in your testing and whatnot, what is your threshold? And then really set forth a policy document to talk about exactly the tools, the incentives, all that stuff.
Right.
But here's the rub, if the city council doesn't choose that as a priority as part of the work plan for staff and put money behind it, then it's, it's kind of a challenge to get that done with all the other competing priorities. So that's why I kind of started with that question, is this going to go before council? And we may, you know, the council may adopt or prioritize this as something for staff to consider, but usually it takes time, energy and effort to update the climate action plan. But it is, it is designed to be a a document that helps guide staff fulfill the community's goals for climate action planning. And it mostly incentivizes developers to develop in a way that's carbon neutral.
Yep.
I'm just correct.
Well, thank.
This is good though. Thank you for that.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, I think I can see everybody, but I don't see any raised hands, so we'll go ahead and move on to our, our next item. Thank you, John, for that report. Appreciate it. Thank you for the, thank you for the discussion afterwards. We're, we're going to move on to our public hearings. For each of the following items, a public will be given an opportunity to speak. After staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant and applicant's representative to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the applicant. Speaker should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. For this item number three, tentative parcel map for forty-nine oh five traffic way, do we have any expertise? Go down the line from on my left, so I have. Well, let me go down the line. Jennifer, do you have any expertise on this? Okay, Jason? Jason, do you have any expertise on this one?
Um, I talked to you, Phil, earlier about it, but I don't believe so.
Okay, Dennis?
No expertise.
Okay, Tori?
No.
Ryan?
No.
And Victoria?
No.
And there was none for me either. Okay. So why don't we turn this over to staff, this item over to staff for their staff report?
Thank you, Sharon. And Ryan is going to give us a presentation on that. I will say that we did speak to the applicant and applicant's representative on this today, and they are going to be asking the commission for some changes to the conditions. Specifically, the, the two-foot landscape planter. So that will be a discussion. And I think anyway, Mariah will present you all those topics and will also kind of elaborate on some of those condition changes that the applicant's asking for. And I think for the most part, staff's pretty neutral on a lot of these topics. We just want to be able to bring you the code requirements. And obviously, we have some discretion as to how to implement those. Again, a reminder on this, they're not developing anything on this site. They're simply wanting to create separate ownership of an existing project. So anyway, I'll let Mariah give you the details and then we'll go from there.
All right. Thanks, Phil. So yeah, this is a tentative parcel map at forty-nine oh five traffic way for a condo or commercial condominium map. So here we can see an aerial view of the site. The star is obviously showing the site we're talking about. It's in the industrial zone. To the west, there is a high-density multifamily zone. Right to the east is the railroad and then to the east of that is another, is a single-family zoning district. So this project is a condominium mapped for commercial tenant spaces, which would allow for individual sale of each space. The existing building does currently have three tenant spaces and then the underlying parcel will remain unsubdivided. All of the common, common areas will be maintained by an association or some comparable mechanism. Now to do a little bit of analysis and talk about some of the requirements for improvements with the condo map. The municipal code states that the design criteria for subdivisions and the required physical improvements for them shall be in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance, standard drawings and other specifications, subdivision standards and other applicable regulations or standards. Since the building is, was built quite a few years ago, the current site does not meet a lot of the standards of the municipal code as it is today. So updates to the site to increase code compliance can be required as conditions of approval. And staff has added them here for the planning commission to approve or discuss or change. So here is the tentative parcel map. You can see the three condominium units there in red. And then there are some restricted condominium areas in the back there in green. So it's more like a backyard sort of area for the specific condos to use for their business. Now to move on to the subdivision regulations and the reason it's being brought before the planning commission. So the municipal code states that the minimum lot size in the industrial zone is two acres, but smaller lots can be created for airspace condominiums if the planning commission determines that smaller lots won't be detrimental to the purpose or intent of the industrial zone. So based on the proposal, staff's recommending approving the proposed tentative parcel map because the creation of airspace condo units in this location won't negatively impact the intended purpose of the industrial zone. Now to move on to parking, the existing parking lot is pretty worn away. It is asphalt, but there's it, it's pretty rough at this point and there's no striping for specific parking spots. It's a little more of a free for all. You just kind of park where you can at this point. The municipal code does require that all parking lots inside the urban services line be paved with asphalt or concrete and that parking spots be marked with paint striping. And therefore, staff has added a condition that the applicant reseal the existing parking lot and stripe it to meet this requirement in the municipal code. Due to the basic, the site as it is today and the parking lot and the way that it is, the parking spaces do need to be a little bit exaggerated from what the code requires, but the applicant's representative has provided a good backup and turning diagram that show the feasibility of the spaces as they've proposed them. The number of parking spaces is based off of the uses in the development and the uses there today require a total of nine parking spaces, which the applicant is meeting with nine proposed spaces, including one accessible space. And here we can see, this just highlights the parking a little bit more. You can see the parking spaces and how they're a little bit exaggerated, but then the red shows the, that they can meet the turning radius and get out. So now to move on to landscaping, the municipal code does require that lots in the industrial zone have at least five percent of the lot landscaped. Right now, the lot doesn't have any landscaping and the applicant's original plan showed landscaping that would cover four point five nine percent of the site. And I say original because I'll talk about that in a second. So here we can see the green areas are showing the landscaping throughout the parking lot. I just want to highlight that two-foot landscape strip in the front there. That's what Phil had mentioned earlier and would be talking about a little bit more. And then I just recently noticed that it actually looks like the applicant is proposing some landscaping in the right-of-way. So that's going to need to be removed from the plan and replaced on the site. But I've changed the condition to reflect that. Another requirement of the municipal code is that street trees are required along private frontages at a minimum of thirty feet on center. However, since the site is already developed and the configuration of the building and the parking lot, it's really, oh, and there's an overhead power line right above the, the frontage as well. So large street trees are really not too feasible in this development. However, oh, I, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention earlier, but the applicant, you see the red trees there. The applicant is proposing five Bradford pear trees throughout the parking lot. So just to go back to the street tree discussion, two of those Bradford pear trees are located along the right-of-way. And they'll act as street trees, but be a little bit more appropriate in scale in the smaller planters and won't interfere with the overhead power lines. Another requirement about landscaping is that a minimum of ten percent of the interior of all parking lots be landscaped and include shade trees. The applicant's plan does meet this ten percent requirement of the parking lot landscaping and the Bradford pear trees act as the shade trees. So this is the discussion about that landscape strip. So the municipal code requires that parking lots that, but a public street are to be separated from the right-of-way by a landscape strip that's a minimum of ten feet wide. However, again, due to the fact that the site is already developed and the building is there and the parking lot is already pretty small, this size is, is not feasible for a landscape strip here. The applicant had originally submitted a site plan showing a two-foot wide landscape planter that separated the public right-of-way along traffic way and the parking lot. However, due to concerns about the usability of the parking lot and the maintenance of that small landscape strip and basically being concerned that as cars are backing out, they'll essentially, you know, run over that landscape strip and it won't, it'll be hard to maintain. So the applicant resubmitted a revised plan that you see here, which had eliminated that two-foot planter and expanded the landscape planters along the northern and southern property lines. The municipal code does allow the planning commission to decrease the minimum landscape area if a finding can be made that existing vegetation, topography or structural arrangement preclude the need for landscaping. Due to the site's existing building placement and parking lot constraints, staff's recommending that the planning commission reduce the required landscape area to the proposed four point five nine percent that the applicant had originally shown with the two-foot landscape strip, but also include a curb, a six-inch curb on the parking lot side. And some points that staff just wants to make about this landscape strip and the curb. Basically, this would add a buffer in the industrial zone, right in front of an industrial building that abuts a high-density multifamily housing on the other side. So just a little landscape buffer would make the site just look a little bit nicer. That's the second point as well. It would just make a site in the industrial zone a little greener, a little more beautiful. The curb would also protect the landscaping from being run over as cars are backing out of the parking spaces in the lot. So it would protect it a little bit. And then probably the most important point from staff is that this landscape strip and this curb would act as a buffer between the parking lot and a future sidewalk along traffic way. That, that would come in the future. Basically, if you can imagine the parking lot and the sidewalk are at the same grade. So someone who's pulling out of a parking space, if there's no landscape strip can easily just drive actually onto the sidewalk. So those are some points from staff, but I know that the applicant is, like I had mentioned, really concerned about the viability of it and the maintenance and all of that. So just some things to think about. But staff has added a condition that the applicant provide a professionally designed land a professionally-designed landscape and irrigation plan with their final maps in the middle and then that they install all the landscaping and irrigation prior to recording this final map. So here are some photos from the site. The top one is kind of an overall look when you're going down trafficway. And then the second one there is a little bit of a closer look at the parking lot. So you can kind of imagine a little bit where that landscape strip would be and where those parking spaces are and kind of how narrow that parking lot is. Again, here's the tentative parcel map. I don't think I need to go through all of the conditions of approval. We can talk about specific ones. They are in your staff report. And then I did add some language to condition number eleven, just stating that no landscaping shall be planted in the city's right-of-way. The project does qualify for a categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act or otherwise known as CEQA, qualifies for a class-one exemption, which exempts projects involving a subdivision of existing commercial or industrial buildings where the use is not expanding. And here are the standard findings that the planning commission needs to make for a parcel map. And then this is the additional finding that needs to be made for a landscape exception to reduce the amount of landscaping required by the code. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt draft PC resolution approving tentative parcel map AT twenty dash zero zero five five. A request to establish three commercial airspace condominium units based on findings and subject to conditions of approval. Some alternatives are that the commission may approve the project with amended or additional conditions. The commission may continue the hearing to a later date or the commission can deny the project if the findings can't be made. The applicant did, the applicant's representative did send over a copy of some of the conditions that they had proposed be changed. They're all here and I'll let the applicant's representative go through them if he would like to, but otherwise staff is open for questions.
Thank you, Mariah. Do you have any questions for staff at this point? Dennis?
Thank you. You had mentioned that parking is based on the existing use of the property right now. I'm imagining that the land use allows for other types of commercial uses versus that's being what's being used today. So if a future tenant decides to change the land use, that might affect the parking area. Is that something that is would have to be brought back to the commission to 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 look at? Because again, more park possibly. Is this a piece of property in which the tunnel that goes under the railroad railroad on?
I think it is close to that. There's a tunnel, yeah, that goes under there. That's kind of a rough little cut through. It's not really improved much. I forget. Is that Mariah? Is it right behind this property or is it next door?
I don't know. The applicant can probably speak to that. I didn't actually go behind.
Back to your first question, really, what would probably happen in a situation if a land use came in to change the parking quantities? It's probably going to prevent that land use from coming in here unfortunately because it's so constrained. In other words, if a retail use came in, it's probably not going to work. And so we would probably have to not unless they came forward, the commission asked for exceptions, it probably just wouldn't work on this site unless they found off-site parking. Parking's really going to constrain it from a lot of different ways, so.
Yeah, just to expand on that, Phil, when we usually, the typical process is when we get a business license application, we look at how much parking we need and if they don't meet, if there's not enough parking in the whole area and they need, you know, half of it for their business and there's not enough, then we couldn't approve the business license and.
It's it's to me, that seems like a disclosure that should be made to potential buyers knowing that they're limited uses as they go into the future if they buy the units. I've noticed that it seems like all the parking is on the building side. Is there any reason why parking is not against the street side versus the building side?
Um, I'm not sure exactly. I I think it's just the way that it worked out.
Hey, is kind of what it reflects. For instance, in the photographs that you had, there are no cars that are along the side of the building. And from my driving by, it seems like that is mostly the scenario. One more comment about I want alternatives to the parking strip. Could there be a decorative, a small decorative wall or something instead of landscaping within that two-feet area? That would substitute as landscaping, I guess. And that's all, please.
Yeah, so that's something the commission can fully talk about this and make recommendations. But yeah, staff went with the landscape strip because the municipal code does require a landscape strip. So we're recommending, you know, even though it's reduced, still keeping with that landscape strip. But if the commission wants to change it, that's completely in your purview.
I guess I'm saying you could still keep it, but so, you know, the the issue is going to be the maintenance of that area and the ongoing maintenance of all the landscaping. We have lots of projects in our community in which the landscaping is not maintained after the fact. So if, you know, a two-foot area becomes kind of a weed trap more than anything. So would, again, with a a small decorative fence be equal to, is it landscaping? Or a component of landscaping?
It could be considered that, but the idea is it landscaping is something that absorbs water, it has plants, it adds to the whole aesthetic. But I think if you're going to do some hardscape, well, anyway, this this decision, I think it's we should probably hear from the applicant and the public before we make deliberations, but certainly there are options to do nothing. There are options to do landscape, there are options to do hardscape. That is certainly up to the up to the commission's purview. I think staff is very open to flexibility on this site, understanding that it is a very narrow, constrained site. It's already developed. The track railroad tracks are behind it, the road is in the front. You know, typically with a project like this, we try and bring it into code compliance as much as we can. But given that it's an industrial zone, there's not a lot of options here. And so the last thing we want to do is is definitely create an obstacle that's going to become a pedestrian hazard or a vehicle hazard. At the same time, we're trying to aesthetically improve the the property. I think the applicant has some good ideas as well that he'll present to you tonight that are perfectly viable options. So I think it's really, you know, I think at the end of the day, we hope that we have a compromise between what the city desires and what the applicant desires on this particular site. I'll leave it at that.
I I do have one more question. That is the finding for for making changes to the landscaping. Could you put that back up, please? Existing vegetation, topography or structural arrangement preclude the need for landscaping. I don't see how the topography does. I'm wondering. To me, it's it's the, we said it over and over. It's an existing condition of development and it seems to me that that would be maybe a more accurate finding to say that physically the location of existing structures preclude mostly the reason why the landscape, it can't be up front. To me, topography means a different thing. And vegetation too, to me, it's to building.
Yeah, this is straight from the municipal code. This is just the standard condition. So you'd have to find, you know, one of these things in conflict or, you know, just one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from staff? Remember, we'll be hearing from the applicant if we'll have a time time to ask her questions.
I had one question just to piggyback off of something I heard around. So there's two out of five street trees. However, aren't those other three trees, even though they're set back against the building? Are they not visible by the residents? Because I don't see anything that would inhibit that from being visible to to improve the aesthetic, even though they're not right up against the street.
Yeah, they'd be they'd be visible. We'd almost consider those like street trees. In fact, a lot of times we require street trees to be further back into a property just because it it lessens the potential of a vehicle hazard and reduces the city responsibility. So they certainly are considered something that that is a landscape item that's visible from the residential properties and it helps soften the building and create that border between the industrial zone and the residential zone.
Okay, and then just that definition, it sounded like there's a I guess there's a very gray line between hardscaping and landscaping. So if it's landscaping, but you don't actually plant any plants, it could still be considered landscaping if it's permeable truly or or no.
That's a interesting question. What are your thoughts on that, Mariah? I don't know.
Because, yeah, a retaining wall or some little, you know, beautiful little short wa- wall barrier that would be a little lip over a sidewalk versus, you know, trenching down to make it permeable and DG with some rocks or something. Those are two very different things in my mind.
And I don't know that our code goes into that level of detail. I think that discretion is up to the commission. I mean, I think it's there's some discretion in that zone. Obviously, a wall or hardscape would not appear to me to be landscape, whereas if it was a permeable surface with you know, wood structures and landscape-type features, maybe even not plants, then it might be something that's considered landscape. But at the end of the day, this two-foot strip is so small, if you add curbs to it, it comes down to even a foot of space. It's just not enough to lose sleep over either way. I think the idea here is protection of public safety and enhancing the aesthetics of the site. We don't currently have plans in the city, nor do we have funding to build sidewalks in this area. But we do one day want to reserve that opportunity in this zone and hope that will happen in the future.
Yeah, just picking back, piggybacking off of what Victoria was saying. I mean, I think the the idea of our part of the idea of a landscape strip is permeable paving. I mean, if you have an entire asphalt parking lot, I mean, we just had a situation a couple of weeks ago where we had, you know, significant rainfall. And where does that all go? And if you have a landscape strip or you have some kind of permeable surface, then you're keeping that water on the property and you have water retention. And that's one of the, you know, that's one of the goals of having a landscape strip.
Are there any other questions of staff? While we open the public hearing, we have the applicant or applicant's representative that would like to speak on this matter.
Yes, let me. Looks like Stephen Pascal has raised his hand. I'll let him speak. Hi, Stephen, I think you have to unmute yourself.
Here we go, unmute. Okay, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hey, commissioners, good evening, staff, remaining, good evening. Yeah, I'm the owner of the property forty-nine oh-five trafficway and I'm I want to convert those to airspace condominiums. I have issues with staff's plan. Basically, that not that landscaping and parking cannot be implemented. That's that can be done. My issue is is that for the analogy of I'm trying to put ten pounds in a five-pound box because there's only so much room there. I'm sure you you understand this is an industrial complex or property. You have trucks that come and go through there. Some are big, some are just regular pickups, et cetera, UPS, FedEx, deliveries, et cetera. So with that in mind, the thing is, is that I I need the, I want the property to be functional. So initially, when I started this process, I looked at the property next to me to the south, that forty-seven eighty-five trafficway. I kind of envision that look, the way the parking is there angled to the to the to the the building, et cetera, which it does function well for me. Then and then the other piece to this is the reality is, is you only have thirty-two feet on the building to the property line, which is five feet off the curb on the street. So that's all you have to work with. So I don't, I don't see the need for the curb. I just see that as a hindrance and and you basically leave between implementing the parking, you get ten feet of through through fare as far as transferring through that property, just ten feet if we were put that curb in there. So I I don't really want that. I don't see that being very feasible for the property and what it's meant to do there. The other piece is I'm, I would like to see if we can go from the ten percent requirement of landscaping to eight percent. I I just see that being more fitting for the property and what we're trying to do. Aside of that, I I don't have any other issues. I don't have a problem putting this landscaping in. I don't have a problem putting the five trees in. I have a problem with parking. I don't have a problem with dressing up the parking lot too, as far as Mariah's got on her on her presentation here tonight. So that's that's pretty much where I sit. That's kind of where I stand. So I'll take any questions if you like, but that's that's my my request.
Thank you, Stephen. Do we have any questions of the applicant from planning commissioners? Okay.
I have a real quick one.
Okay, Jason, thank you.
The property you mentioned that you wanted to to duplicate or look like, is that the one that's just to the right of the picture that's being shown?
Yeah, I believe that's the one he's.
That's correct. It's forty-seven eighty-five trafficway.
Forty-seven eighty-five, okay. And if, and this is for staff, if there was a a future upgrade to have sidewalks, there would be virtually no barrier between pedestrians and the parking lot. What what would be better? I don't know if the the grass or the would would actually inhibit that from being put in or actually make a hindrance to the use of the property.
So, yeah, so I don't think I actually emphasize this too much, but the grasses that staff is recommending and conditioning are these big deer grasses. I'm not sure, I can't think of another place outside of City Hall because I see them every day, but they're the big puffy kind of little bushes and they're pretty sturdy. You know, once they get a decent size, if if you, you know, if you hit it, I think you'd even realize it. But, you know, certainly a curb would be more protecting, but the grasses that we're recommending are pretty sturdy grasses, not just, you know, little little ones.
Okay, well, I'm concerned about the the viability, the use of the property is is paramount in an industrial area. And, you know, to to kind of do something partway to try to, you know, deal with a code issue can can sometimes be a hindrance. And I'm just looking at the the overall picture. We're trying to do something just to say we did it or are we actually trying to to make this property useful for the applicant?
I have a quick question for the applicant, just to be bring clarity. Is he still still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, so it sounds like the you're completely okay with the staff's recommendation on the parking lot, payment, improvements, striping. It's really about the landscaping, correct?
That's pretty much it. That's pretty much it, yes.
And that of the landscaping, your main concern because of usability, you know, delivery, the different uses of the vehicles on that property, it's the curb that would separate the parking lot and the landscaping that is the biggest is that the is that the your biggest concern overall?
You're speaking to the curb on the the two-foot piece with a six-inch curb, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I just see that being that's two feet that I need. That's how I look at it. It's just.
So it's not the it's it's not the landscape. You're actually more concerned with the overall landscaping that strip, not just the curb to prevent truck drivers and whatnot from running over the landscaping, but you're concerned with the entire strip being landscaped because of usability?
Correct. I mean, you remember now we're putting ADA in there, so you got a walkway four foot off the building, and you put the parking space in. Now you got what you got left is to travel through through the the lot. That's it. You know, so that two that that two feet is a lot to me.
Huge counts on this property. It's a tight site. Yeah.
Yeah, are there any other questions from for the planning commissioners for applicant?
Yes, Commissioner. So, yeah, just to, I guess, reiterate what Commissioner Betts was saying. So regardless if there's deer grass or a decorative fencing or rocks or anything, that strip would inhibit when it could it could be quite needed for larger vehicles and trucks to to make the turns and to do their deliveries properly without having to do like an 18-point turn is what you're saying, right?
Are you speaking to the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes, Commissioner, that's correct. That's why I'm saying I need every bit of footage I can get.
Right, okay, yep. Heard.
Hey, any other questions for our applicant? Okay, sing non, let's bring it back to commission for some some discussion. And I'd I'd like to ask staff.
If we open them, sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Up to the public yet? Also, do we have anyone else that called in? Do we need to check on?
Yeah, sorry about that. Is there anybody else that needs to come in from the public?
It doesn't look like there's anyone besides the applicant that wants to speak. I'll just remind it, anyone who's on the phone to press star nine if you do want to speak, but at this moment, there there aren't any other raised hands.
All right, then let's bring it back to the commission. And I'd like to ask staff, what if he were required to put this landscaping strip in, it's only two feet wide, what happens with the portion that's paved right now that's in the right of way?
So it would remain, it would remain that way. So, yeah, it doesn't really change that so much. It's not really a sidewalk now. I mean, really, in a perfect world, we would delay doing that landscape strip until such a time we actually build a public sidewalk. But then the problem is, we can't come back to this applicant to require that landscape planter when we do build the sidewalk because it's on private property. And we don't have the space to put it on public property. So you bring up a good point. Is it the right time to do it? We don't have sidewalk along this whole area, and you can see further up the street where the telephone pole is right in the middle of where a sidewalk might go. It's an odd situation out there. And I think simply our staff is trying to say, here's what our code says needs to happen out there. Here's what should happen in a perfect world. This site, though, is already constrained in the adjacent sites to it. But we also take a look at the long-term picture. How can we slowly piece together these things for for long-term improvements? But on this one, I'm going to stand clearly on the fence and let the commission decide because I do feel for the the applicant, and I do think that the maneuvering space for vehicles as at an extreme minimum, especially given the land use that's industrial with a tile and granite shop and auto repair and a lot of a lot of things moving around. And so, you know, if it was a flower shop or retail store, I would say that you know, it's probably going to get cared for a lot better, a landscape area, but it's obviously clearly for many years, it's been a 100% paved site. And the applicant is willing to do some landscape here, trees, which is very significant. And I think that's a very positive for this property.
So from just looking at the picture, it looks like the driveway apron is probably six feet deep. So we would take away essentially eight feet of what is currently being used by the applicant there. Okay, the other question, Mariah, there was a picture from landscaping that showed an expanded planter on the south side. That one. Was that the applicant that was requesting an extended planter on that side? Because there in the other another picture on the parking picture was showing tandem parking spaces there. And that wouldn't allow for that, I don't think, if we added if that planter.
Yeah, so this was the applicant's last middle where they took away that landscape strip and they made the strips or they made the landscape planters on the sides a little bit bigger, something that I didn't mention. You're right. So there was tandem parking over there and it actually, it's harder to see here, but that flipped over to the other side on the left-hand side, really faintly below top one, you can see a second. So there's still nine spaces.
Okay. And do we have an aerial of the between the two properties? Because there's some kind of an enclosure. I'm just wondering where the park property line actually is in relation to the the enclosures. I'm looking at a street view of the neighboring property. And it seems like there's some kind of enclosure right up against the building. I wasn't sure if that was encroaching on this parcel or or not.
This is the aerial photo that I have on either side of the building.
Yeah, on the south one, there's right in where your pointer is there on the street view, there show there shows some enclosures of some sort attached to the southernly building. So I was just curious as to where that property line that was in relation to that. If those structures were actually on his property.
Oh, I'm not sure. Stephen might be able to elaborate on that. I wasn't familiar with that.
Stephen, are you still on the line?
I am, I am. I didn't know if you wanted to answer.
Do you has there been a survey done on your site? And do you know if those enclosures are on your property or are they on the adjoining?
I'm not there. If you're looking towards the rear.
Yeah, toward towards the railroad and there's some enclosures in between the two buildings.
Depending on what this, when this picture was taken, there's no no enclosures there. There are lines of marble that Tom's tile has.
Oh, that's what that is. Okay.
You know?
That could be that what that is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any discussion among the planning commissioners?
Yeah, if you if you look at the street view, you can see them in the picture.
Yeah, I think he what he was saying was those are granite slabs or for the.
Yeah, they're they're vertical granite slabs.
Yeah, I can see that.
Okay.
We're kind of stuck in a hard place as far as I can see.
I had a question.
Victoria.
Yeah, around the curbs that are already going around the trees. I was just bringing my attention to permeability and stormwater sheet flow because of that discussion earlier on that two-foot strip. And regardless if we decide on that part for those tree areas, are there curb cutouts to where there could be water going into that area? Or is that not going to be in the plan? Because that would be a potential modification. I would be a proponent of at least the two street trees. I'm not sure if that would because I don't have the 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 stormwater engineering background to to see if that sheet flow would actually not be wise to put next to the building, but at least the two right by the street is what I'm thinking about curb cutouts, so.
You can modify your condition to do that. We can't guarantee the property will drain that direction because it might have to get regraded. And given that the building and pavement's already there, we can't do it, but it's possible. And so I think it could be explored and you can put that in as a condition.
Yeah, I think the two street trees because it looks like the 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 way the cars are moving in and like the asphalt going now, but again, I I can't be for sure with the topography, so.
It's an interesting question. Are they going to have to implement stormwater management with the project?
Well, not really, because it's actually kind of the whole site's paved. They're not doing a development. They're not doing a grading project. They're not doing anything that's going to trigger that. So because they're adding some landscaping on the site, they're improving the situation. So really, when they're not going to be subject to the stormwater standards unless they were to dig up this parking lot and redo it.
So if it runs off where it goes, this is where it's going to go.
Where it's going to go, yeah.
So I couldn't tell from from the exhibits, were there going to be curbs around these street trees? I the only curb I saw was the new one out in the front. Was there supposed to be one around the street trees?
I don't know, Mariah. I don't think we have that level of detail. I think at this point, they would have to come in with a plan.
Because if if there's not, you know, then if you just had a flush curb, then, you know, it's it's kind of a moot point as whether or not we have curb cuts or.
And I don't think we're going to mandate the curbs as far as I know. Do you know, Mariah?
Yeah, no, we didn't get that level of detail. I I have the impression that the applicant was not planning on putting the curbs around those planters, but we could confirm that or talk about it more.
Well, it seems from a site, especially from storm drainage, it would be better if they didn't have curbs there, just so, you know, water could flow into them or whatever.
Agreed.
This is John. It does look like there's another member of the public who would like to speak.
Okay.
Comments still open. Mike Brittichini. You have to unmute yourself, Mike.
Mike? There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, Commission. I'd just like to clarify some of the drainage. So the applicant's intent was to not put curbs. Currently, right now, this the site drains. It's fairly flat. A lot of water drains out into the street, but then it drains to a low point right in front of the norley driveway where it reenters his property, blows through a swale, and then ends up in the big drainage swale along the railroad at the back. So he does not intend to put curbs around those planters. We would probably put some deepened header boards, but that would allow some water to run into those planters as long as they're you know, tributary to something. Our intent is not to regrade the parking lot and change the grades out there. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thanks, Mike. That's good to know. Okay, is there any other discussion among the planning commissioners?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. So I actually live up the street from that, like a quarter mile or so, but I do walk my dogs along there. And there are actually sidewalks on the other side of the street where most people walk. So I kind of feel like if there are no super, you know, like no plans in the near future for sidewalks by the city, that putting a curb there would end up causing more trouble for the residents across the street, having to deal with big cars who feel like they can't go into the driveway. They just park on the street. So then you're causing issues there. And I did want to point out that there are really nice sidewalks across the street. So anybody who does walk there typically walks on that side now anyway. So I just thought I'd give that feedback because that's a pretty common place where where I do walk my dogs, so.
Thank you, Tori. Yes, I I walk that with my wife as well, so I'm well aware of that.
I think I've seen you there.
Also did want to point out, if I may, a quick point that the more utility that the that the business has on that asphalt for parking is going to reduce the amount of parking that's going to be on the street, which does tend to become hazard.
That's true.
Yeah, I really appreciate Commissioner Keen's feedback as a stakeholder and then followed by the other commissioner who walks as well. I bike along there, so I actually have not really even noticed the curb on the other side. But yeah, I would be impacted if there was a big truck there and not necessarily just, yeah, making it easier for the utility of the the parking lot space. So I can really understand that from traffic control of not having that strip.
Okay, well, if is there any other discussion or does somebody want to make a motion on how to proceed on this? Seems like most of us are are of the opinion that that front planter strip should probably not be there. So if somebody wants to make a a motion regarding.
So how do we approve the new map that he submitted with the enlarged side planters instead?
Oh, what we should probably do is go through the conditions of approval. And then we can start talking about any changes that the commission might want to do to those conditions. And then you can make a motion and vote on that. So we can go that route. So I think what we should do is focus on the landscape, have the commission focus on the landscape conditions first, Mariah, and bring those up if we have those. And go through each of those to to see if there's a an issue or a change suggested by the commission. And the motion maker will then need to suggest those changes and then get a second and then vote on that. So I think the focus of this is mission number, let's see, I've got.
Number 11 is the big one, but unfortunately, I didn't number these. Find it.
Well, what did you could we just modify the the motion to the modification would be to support the plan that the applicant has provided with respect to landscaping. It's a visceral thing. And so to me, I'd be willing to support the subdivision with the recommended changes that the applicant has provided as an alternative to the two-foot strip along the frontage.
With the increased planters on.
Yes, for the the this this exhibit right here.
And is that, just as a question clarification, Commissioner Schmidt, does that include adopting a finding that allows the applicant to slightly reduce the required amount of overall landscaping?
Yes. And there was, we had that special finding that was presented to us.
And Commissioner Schmidt, does that also include, I had revised the language a little bit to specifically prohibit landscaping in the public right of way?
Yes.
But, okay.
So is that a clear enough motion to act as a to act as a motion, please?
Yeah. And I'll second that motion.
So just to clarify from staff's perspective, this motion is to approve this landscape plan with the reduced landscaping as it is shown without any landscaping in the public right of way.
Of the the landscape is, yeah, there is a reduction from 10% to 8% as the applicant is at discussed, but he's he's also, in a sense, increased landscaping of this plan by expanding those side areas. So, but to to be to So um, but to to be to be proper, yes, the the motion would be include a reduction in landscaping from ten to eight percent as requested by the applicant.
Okay.
Said, is that a is that a good good enough for the um the motion there? Is it clear enough for staff?
Yeah, I think that's the case. I think we have a motion and a second still on table. And I think that um
Okay.
And that if you're ready to.
Yeah, Net, can you uh roll call, please, on this?
Yep, Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre? I'm sorry, did I? I didn't hear you. Commissioner McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Most definitely.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Uh, Chairperson Banden Eichhoff?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck with you, Stephen. Okay.
I thank you for that.
You're welcome. All right. Do we have any um commission reports? Or comments? No? Okay, can we turn it over to Phil for a director's report?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, well, usually this time I like to report to you big topics that are happening in the community. I've got a couple things to report to you. And I also want to reserve this time if you have questions of me, uh, community development activities are happening around town. Uh, first thing I want to mention, of course, is strategic planning that's happening this Friday and Saturday. Friday night and Saturday is the City Council strategic planning. All public is welcome. I will be done via virtual meeting this this time, which is very unusual for us. I will be, you know, basically the city's major goal setting will be reporting out on a lot of the information that we heard about from all of our measure D twenty meetings where we incited uh the public comments about what we should be focusing on for our one percent sales tax measure that was passed. And um, we heard a lot of great comments, so we'll be reporting out on that. Another big topic that's going to be coming our way, that's going to be a really tough one to tackle, is affordable housing. Now, the state mandates that we develop a certain number of affordable housing units in our city every year. And it's done. It's what's called the RENA. It's the regional housing needs that we have to accommodate in our area. Now, we do that by either restricting certain units or by incentivizing units that become what we call affordable by design. Now, right now, the city's got an affordable housing policy. The housing element of our general plan that we just recently passed calls for us to actually adopt a whole new affordable housing ordinance that's consistent with the state laws that have changed. So the City Council wants to talk about that, and they're going to invite the Planning Commission in at a joint session between the Council and the Planning Commission to talk about that. You may have already received an invite for that meeting. If you could make that, it's great. It's a joint session. It'll be the City Council and the Planning Commission together talking about this topic. We will have a consultant uh from M I G. Her name's Genevieve. She's really well versed on housing topics and housing law. She helped us out with our housing element of our general plan. And she's going to talk to us about affordable housing policies. Our a lot of our surrounding cities have these policies in place. And essentially what they require is that when someone's developing a really large housing project, that they either develop some affordable units or that they pay an in lieu fee to the city so the city can give those funds to a nonprofit like People's Self Up Housing or the Housing Authority so that they can build affordable units that are available. When we say affordable units, really what it is is units that are affordable to the workforce, units that can be sold um for, you know, an income of a teacher, police officer, firefighter, or units that can be rented for that price. That's what the state typically mandates by affordability in one of those four affordability levels, whether it's moderate affordable, low income affordable, very low income affordable, or extremely low. That's what we're going to be tackling. It's always a tough topic to talk about um because we don't want to place the burden on development, nor at the same time do we want to artificially suppress the housing market. But it's a topic we have to address because state policy requires us to address it. So we're going to be getting into the weeds on that here in the near future. So that's a big topic. The other big topic that's going to be coming up later this year is the general plan. And that's going to be a fun one. And that's what we get to talk about the next twenty years of the city's future. So um, we're going to have to rely upon your intimate wisdom and the wisdom of our community to to start guiding that process along later this year. That's all I have to say for tonight, but I'm here to answer your questions as always. And um glad to have our first official Planning Commission hearing with the new with the new commissioners and uh we're off to a good start.
Thanks, Phil. Any questions for Phil? Okay, well, then we will adjourn our meeting until the next scheduled meeting, which is February what date is that? It says.
March second.
March second.
Oh, on the on the agenda, it said February sixteenth at the bottom, March second.
That's an error.
So.
January thirty one.
Do what do we have on our next agenda? Phil, what do we have on the next?
What do you have on that next agenda? And that, do you have anything?
Yeah, it's actually Mariah's project on Serena Court.
What is the?
Little addition of uh um of a generator and um basically an enclosure for a cell site up there on uh on Serena Court. So it's just a little amendment.
Well, that sounds really exciting. Great. All right.
Sounds like a five minute meeting. Perfect.
It'd be.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody. We'll adjourn until our next meeting.
I think this is a really great commission. I'm looking forward to learning from all of you.
That's going to be great.
I would agree with that statement, Tori. Thank you. Have a great night.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Take care.